Hey, thanks Karen. It's seven o'clock, so we'll get our council meeting started and with that I'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda, of course, is to adopt the agenda. Recommendation is that the agenda for September twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, regular me of council be accepted and passed. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Steve, seconded by Sherry. Thank you. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to disclosure of pecuniary interest. And I will declare pecuniary interest with regard to the presentation to the fair ambassador as she is my daughter. So I'll pass the meeting over to councillor Hearn for that section of it. Councillor McKay, you have anything to declare?
I do not.
Councillor Yake?
No.
Councillor Hearn?
No.
Councillor Burke?
Yes, two A. Some of the attachments for that file were prepared by my employer.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Okay. So we had a close, a special council meeting with a closed meeting session earlier this afternoon. And so we just have to report out of that closed sessions. We have a recommendation here that the council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North received report HR twenty twenty two dash eleven. Market check policy and pay equity review. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Lisa, seconded by Sherry. All those in favor?
Oh, hold on.
Sorry, Sherry, go ahead.
Can I make a comment? Before we vote on that?
So on the, on the closed items, we're not really allowed to comment in open session?
Okay, that's fine.
Unless, unless you wish a recorded vote. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And the next recommendation is that the council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North received the warden up to grow twenty twenty two market check and pay equity review. And further that council approved the confidential direction to staff. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Steve, seconded by Dan. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. And the final item coming out of closed recommendation is that the council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North approved the closed meeting minutes of the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two council meeting. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Lisa, seconded by Dan. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Yeah. That's it. So we're on to awards declaration recognition. So I'll pass this over to councillor Hearn.
You'll need the portable mic too, brother.
There, it's on now. It probably was on before. Congratulations, Kelsey, on, on behalf of the council, the township of Wellington North. I'd like to officially congratulate you on your achievement. Uh, you really deserve it. Uh, you have a big year ahead of you. And hopefully cross our fingers and toes lots of events to go to. And I think you've already been going to a lot. I, I'm confident that you'll represent the agricultural society and our community really, really well. Our fall fairs are a really valuable part of the real fabric that mixes past with present rural and urban, young and old. It, it does everything. So I think my main message to you is I just really want you to enjoy your year. Um, soak it up and embrace it and, and smile an awful lot. So thank you and congratulations.
How about mom and dad? Come on.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the county council update. And I, it looks like I'm on that for this month. And on this particular time, I wanted to spend some time talking about the blue box program. So we've had some discussion about blue box program before, but I just wanted to, I think there's lots of confusion as to what's happening or going to happen in the coming days and years with regard to the blue box program. So it's in the process of being transferred from municipal responsibility. Um, county has been looking after the blue box program to it's going to be transferred to um, the producers. So the people who are producing those packaging goods will be responsible for paying for the recycling program, much like the tire program, if you're familiar with that. The tire producers are responsible to pay for the recycling of tires. The producers of those packaging goods that become our, our staple in our blue boxes are going to be paid for by those organizations that produce it. Now it's a, it's been a long time coming, this process. And it's going to take a little longer to get it implemented. It's going to be implemented over the next three years across the province where the producers will take over from municipalities. All of the responsibility for the blue box program. Um, so it's being transitioned over the next three years. And unfortunately, Wellington County is not on the first couple of years list for that transition to happen. It'll come to Wellington County in twenty twenty five. Uh, so some of the larger urban municipalities like Toronto and so on will go first. And then there'll be some others in the second year and, and we're in the third year. So during this transition period, basically, anything that is a part of the blue box program now in our community will be, will be a part of the, the transition. So the, the producers are responsible for all the materials that currently are eligible for the blue box to be, to make sure that they can deal with the the, uh, all of those products as well. Now, there is some effort being made from AMO and so on. And I sit on that that task force where we're talking about encouraging the province to take on some new products or new items that could be recycled, hopefully in the blue box. But that likely is not going to happen until after, or until this transition is at least well underway. Uh, it's going to be a big undertaking to take this all over from the municipalities to uh, the producer organizations. They have to create the infrastructure, the, you know, the organization to make it all happen. They may contract with some municipalities to to do the blue box program. Still, we don't know what that's going to look like, or they may decide to go their own way uh, almost completely. Uh, you know, for instance, since this has been done in, in DC and they basically created their own organization from top to bottom, uh, from the producer's perspective to make it happen. Uh, one of the reasons I wanted to talk about this in particular is because waste management are one of our major employers in Mount Forest also. Then not only do they pick up the curbside materials through the blue box, uh, garb landfill waste and are now green bin. But they also process the, uh, recycled products in their facility in Mount Forest. So that I would imagine that they will be working with the producer organization to continue to use that facility for processing. And perhaps they will even be able to contract with the pickup as well. So that is that how this transition rolls out is good is not only important for from municipal perspective, it's also important for one of our major employers, waste management, who picks up and processes that material as well. So yeah, the, the, the transition is coming. Um, the county contracts with waste management for pickup. And the, the producer may, organization may just take over that contract, or they may choose to do something else. But the hope is that they will pick it up. Well, they will have to pick it up at the same frequency that they've been picking it up now. And deliver the same level of service that they've been delivering or enhance it. So um, for the, for the next two years, twenty three and twenty four, Wellington County will still be continuing to in cooperation with waste management, continuing to operate the blue box program. And all, all the other waste management services that they provide. And so that's in the short term, there's not a lot of change happening. But the transition is coming in twenty twenty five. So that's, uh, that's kind of the item I wanted to cover today. I'd have happy to take any questions about county matters on anything else. Steve?
Thanks for that, Mayor. Um, so will this be a cost saving measure then?
It will, it will result in savings for the county and their solid waste program, yes.
Right. And then it's fully funded by the producers, not that could be completely off the taxpayers' burden.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So the cost to run the blue box program from municipal perspective is a bit variable because it depends on the value of the recycled products. And we've seen big fluctuations in the value of those recycled products over the last couple of years. Uh, where, you know, when price of oil went up, of course, the price of plastics went up. Uh, but it's starting to come down again, just like oil has. So uh, that, that risk around all of that will come off of the taxpayer. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Okay, next up, we'll move, oh, Steve?
Sorry, I just, just when you said to move on. So the green bins too will be picked up by producers or how the?
No, green bin will continue to be a county operated program.
Yeah, okay.
So the, both the landfill and so the yellow bag program and the green program will continue to be operated by county of Wellington and of course the leaf and yard waste.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, will be continued to operate by the county through their solid waste. It's just the blue box that will be transitioning. And hopefully we can convince the province to regulate some additional things to go into the blue box to be recycled by producer responsibility.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda, we have a couple of presentations. First, we have Wellington North Power, and I see we have Raymond Peterson with us, uh, virtually to, uh, to talk about the promissory note agreement. So welcome, Raymond. If you wouldn't mind just walking through the process for us, uh, that'd be great.
Okay, thanks, Andy. In twenty eighteen, we, uh, started to get loans from the town of Dominion Bank, which historically we have only had loans from, uh, infrastructure Ontario. And, um, recently they have been asking for us to uh, get an agreement, a formal agreement uh, for the township to postpone principal payments of promissory of the pron- on the promissory note. So, um, this is just that they have a firmer position as in the loan repayment hierarchy. And, uh, as I indicated in the letter to
You froze up, Raymond, if you can hear me? Is everything froze? Yeah, maybe the problem's on our end.
Matt? Can you turn your camera on, Matt? No?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Raymond?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I think maybe the problem was on our end. It froze up on you, so.
Okay. So, uh, as I was saying, uh, in twenty thirteen, there was a resolution passed by the township to, uh, postpone uh, principal payments on the promissory note to satisfy infrastructure Ontario. TD wants a formal agreement. I, uh, as part of their legal requirement for their, uh, legal department. And, uh, so we're asking that the township consider this agreement that has been sparked, uh, has been submitted as part of the meeting package. And, um, formally agree to postpone principal payments. I don't think this really changes anything in terms of, uh, the hierarchy, hierarchy of payments. Because TD already has a general agreement. Uh, general, uh, on, uh, for the loans that we have with them, whether we have a line of credit with them. But uh, this is kind of a requirement for any new loans that we will get from them. So are there any questions about how this works or the details of the agreement?
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, not seeing any. Looks like everybody is comfortable with the proceeding with that, Raymond, unless not seeing any questions. You, you have anything else you wanted to add at this point?
No, I believe that's all.
Okay. All right, so we have a recommendation here that council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North received the Wellington North Power Inc. Twenty twenty two promissory note agreement presentation. And further that the council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North hereby postpone the repayment of the Wellington North Power Inc. indebtedness in full to the prior repayment of the bank indebtedness. And further that the mayor and clerk be authorized to send, to sign any necessary documents. Could I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Dan, seconded by Lisa. Any discussion on that? Hey, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Raymond. Next, we have a presentation with regard to our emergency management program. We have Bobby from the county emergency management department. Is Bobby with us?
I do not believe, uh, Bobby is on the line and they're not in the waiting room. So you could, uh, just, I mean, everybody's seen the, the report, you could, uh, just vote on the recommendation.
Okay. So I'll read the recommendation and then we'll see if there's any discussion around that. Recommendation is as follows that the council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North received report EM twenty twenty two dash zero zero one annual emergency management program report regarding the status of the township's emergency management program for twenty twenty two for information. And further that the council of the township of Wellington North accepts the annual status report for the township's emergency management program for twenty twenty two. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Steve, seconded by Sherry. Any discussion on that report? Okay, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to adoption of the minutes of the council and public meeting. We have a recommendation that the minutes of the regular me of council and the public meeting held on September twelfth, twenty twenty two be adopted as circulated. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Steve, seconded by Dan. Any questions or comments on those minutes? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on from, to business arising from previous meetings. We have the standing report of the Mount Forest pool replacement. Of course, there's some work being done by staff and the background on that. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss tonight, particular on this, uh, this report? Okay. Not seeing any, so we'll move on to items for consideration. So what, uh, if councillor Burke's pulling out two A, we'll vote on that one separately because of her pecuniary interest. I would pull out for A, the fire service update. Is there any others that others, anyone else would like to pull out? Steve?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna get four A pulled and then seven A. For an legion coffee day. Thank you.
Anything, anybody else has they'd like to pull out?
No, I'm fine.
Any others for you, Sherry? Okay. So that again, that's two A, four A and seven A. So we'll deal with all the others. And the recommendation for that is that all items listed under items for consideration on the September twenty sixth, twenty twenty two council agenda, with the exception of those items identified for separate discussion be approved. And the recommendations therein be adopted. Did I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Lisa, seconded by Steve. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll go back to two A. And the recommendation here is that the council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North received report DC twenty twenty two dash forty three regarding the final approval of the three hundred fifty Cork Street Inc. Site plan agreement. Did I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Steve. Seconded by Lisa. Any discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to four A. This is the, uh, fire service report. Recommendation here that the council of the corporation of the township of Wellington North received the Wellington North Fire Service Order two and three update twenty twenty two. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Dan, seconded by Steve. And with that, uh, I guess I pulled it. So I was just wanting to, uh, uh, talk, I see Chief Harrow is on, on the call with us. I just wanted to talk about, uh, the amount of call volume we're now seeing as partly as a result of the, uh, the backlog, um, at hospitals and ambulances being held up. Um, and of course, that's putting more strain on our volunteer fire service. I'm just wondering if, uh, might be an appropriate time to, uh, do a little review of our, uh, fire service to make sure we have appropriate resources in place to support our volunteers. Uh, just wondered what your thoughts on that would be? Chief?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Lennox. Um, yeah, it, we definitely, as you saw on the statistics part of it, um, in the graph that we're able to provide you, it's definitely, the calls have been up over the summertime over last year. Um, and a lot of it is attributed to the increase in medical calls that we are seeing. Um, as you may know, from the county council reports, ambulances are getting tied up more and more in, uh, what we call offload delay. So if Guelph gets busy, then they start bringing ambulances down from the county towards Guelph to help cover. And then eventually, um, all of the ambulances get down into Guelph. And that leaves this area kind of stripped of coverage. So what we're seeing is longer response times, which is causing us to uh, be tiered out more. Um, we have a clause in our agreement that if the ambulance is delayed over twenty minutes, then they will tear us out. So that again is, is increasing our call volume. So it is an increased burden on the volunteers, but we're checking in regularly to make sure that everybody's okay with the increased volume and, and so far so good. Um, but with that, yeah, it increases a lot of stuff. It increases the, the reports that we have to do for EMS, it increases the incident reports and, and that, um, so it is, it is putting a burden on the volunteers and on our management team to, to keep up with it all and um, we're managing, but it, it is, it is a lot more. But kudos to the volunteers, um, for doing what they did over the summertime and then continue to do, um. They keep responding to calls and keep, um, their heads up and then keep doing what they do. So kudos to them for that, too.
Yeah, certainly pass on our, our thanks to the volunteers for all the effort that, uh, it's going into that. It's a challenging time for sure.
Yeah, it is. And just before I forget, because I tend to forget lots of things. Um, we, you may have seen on our social media and that, and we've gotten a decent response so far, and we're going to ramp it up, but we are recruiting right now, um, for firefighters for both stations. So um, we've gotten five or six resumes already, but we'd like to see a lot more and hopefully get more people involved. So, um, you see that. Hopefully you can share it, keep spreading the word. Um, we've been handing out rat cards to in different events that we've been to, to help promote the recruiting process. So, um, that'll hopefully help out too.
Other questions or comments? Steve?
Thanks. And through you, uh, Mayor, thanks, Chief Harold. Um, it looks like there's been a lot of, uh, training completed over the last little while as well, even though you guys have been busier than, uh, than you have, than you usually are within the last two years with what you said is the, uh, the download. Um, and it looks like there's a lot more efficiencies, just kind of some smaller things in the background, but still streamlines a lot of stuff. Um, I guess one of my questions is in, in your report, there was the, the need for new scuba gear. Um, what kind of a prices on that, that we need to be looking at for, uh, for the budget for next year? What, what price are you looking at, I guess, in your budget for, for next year?
Well, yeah, um, it, it's a significant price. So going back, uh, the SCBA has been in the budget for the past three years to be replaced next year. Um, three years ago, um, there's money that's been started to be put away. So if you remember in the budget process, every year for the past three years, we put a significant chunk of money away to help offset the costs and hopefully cover the cost. Um, Deputy Goddaddy, who's on the, who's on the Zoom here as well, he's done a, a ton of work in this research. Um, talking to other fire departments, see who we can group this purchase with.
Right.
Talking to the vendors and all that stuff. But to answer your question, we are looking at over three hundred thousand to replace our SCBAs. Um, which is, is all of our SCBA harnesses. It's all of our bottles. It's our filling station. It's our mask. It's everything to do with the whole, um, SCBA program. So um, it, it's, it's going to be coming next year's budget, but we have been planning for it and there is hopefully going to be a, a significant money in the reserves to offset that cost that it will not be a burden, a huge burden to taxpayers all at once. Um, they've been putting away for years for it, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just a quick follow-up. Do they have to be replaced like every five years or every ten years, Chief, or?
Um, the, it's fifteen years. So in fifteen years, it's, it's three years. So it's called three cycles. So the NFPA standard, it changes every five years. And you don't want to get, because the changes are very significant. Um, this one that's significant is, uh, that we used to have what's called half hour bottles. Um, but now the bottles are moving to forty five minute bottles. Um, so that that gives the firefighters a little bit more time inside a structure, but what it does is gives them more time to get in and it gives them more time to get out. Um, so that's why everything has to be significantly changed because it's all forty five hundred PSI or forty five minute balls now. So um, that's why that's a wholesale change and it's something that we just can't piecemeal. We have to do all at once because of that change.
They don't want something like that breaking down while they're using them. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem.
Any other questions or comments in regard to this report? Okay, we'll call the motion then. All those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to seven A. This is in regard to the, uh, It's carried, thank you, we'll move on to seven A, this is in regard to the uh. Permission to distribute poppies from Legion, so I have a recommendation here. That the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Wellington North received the correspondence dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. From the Royal Canadian Legion Branch one thirty-four, Mount Forest. Request for permission to distribute poppies and hold a Remembrance Day service and parade. And further that the Council of the Township of Wellington North grant permission to the Royal Canadian Legion's Arthur and Mount Forest. For the distribution of poppies within the Township of Wellington North and to hold a Remembrance Day service and parade. I get a mover and a seconder for that, please. Moved by Steve, seconded by Sherry. And open the floor for discussion, Steve, do you want to take that one away?
Yeah, thank you, and again through you, uh Mayor Lennox, I always just like bringing this out to uh. Uh to talk about it publicly and hopefully get it in the paper that uh the uh Remembrance Day is something near and dear to uh to this township for sure. And something that I like to participate in and always like to bring uh attention to it, so that's the only reason I wanted to bring it out.
Thanks, Steve, uh anybody else have anything, comments, question? I'd just like to thank the uh the Mount Forest Legion for, you know, initiating this every year, sending us the letter, and it's nice to see that we're dealing with both of. Arthur and Mount Forest at the same time, so. Thanks to everyone who makes that possible. Call the motion, then, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Uh brings us to the end of our items for consideration, any notice of motions this evening? Okay, so it doesn't seem that anybody has one, so we'll move on to community group meeting program report. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report on? This evening? Uh Sherry and then Lisa?
Hey, so I'd just like to remind everybody about the. Uh I know it is on the schedule of events, but the opening of the parquet in Mount Forest on Friday. Uh beside BMO and also uh to let everyone know that there are still a few. Uh available spaces for the You've Been Flapped. Uh being run through the Mount Forest Aquatics, uh and just a reminder that uh the last day is October the second. For that event.
Okay, thank Sherry, Lisa?
Um I just wanted to report about the Arthur BIA, um had a meeting with them last week. Um just wanted you to get it in your calendar that their AGM is. Um November the sixteenth, um there will be a couple of spots for new directors, if anyone. Knows of any, anyone within the BIA area. Um that would be a good fit, uh I believe Chair Keith is is stepping down and and Mitch as well, both of which have done an incredible job over. Um our inaugural, I guess, term of uh the Arthur BIA.
Thanks, Lisa, anybody else, anything they'd like to report on? Uh just a reminder too that the uh Arthur Lions are doing their drive-through chicken barbecue again uh. On the twenty-ninth uh this week, so I think there's still tickets available, because I know I bought some today, so. I don't have anything else beyond that. So we'll move on to bylaws. Oh, sorry, Sherry?
I just thought of something else, sorry, uh so Saturday was the official last day of the farmer's market. However, some of the vendors will be doing a pop-up event. Um as some of them felt that they would like to continue to do it, so that will be running Saturday morning. At the Victory Church again.
Okay, thanks, Sherry, that's great, I didn't know about the pop-up idea, hopefully that that works well for the vendors and. So will they need support uh from?
Um I think uh one of the vendors was sort of put in charge. Of of sort of running, organizing it, um. So I don't know that all of the vendors are are going to participate, but I know that there are a few that will still be there Saturday morning. And I don't know if Dale is on here, if maybe he can elaborate to that, but um. That's just what I heard Saturday morning when I was at the market.
Okay, thanks, I see deals popped up, so Dale, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Lennox, and thank you for mentioning that, councillor Burke, um yeah, so it's gonna be kind of. As councillor Burke said, just a pop-up market, but the um. Chicken Thicker Farm vendors are the ones that are actually gonna be coordinating it, but it looks like most of the vendors are going to uh. Be back for one more go, so uh hopefully we have a another good Saturday, it's been an amazing year that um. This past year, we did not have to move the market inside. Any Saturday during the uh the summer, we were outside in the sunshine, so it's been a great year, so hopefully one more day.
And and just to confirm, that's this coming Saturday, they're looking to do that?
Correct.
Okay, I think the forecast is no rain for the weekend if I am, last time I looked, so.
We'll hold you to that.
Oh geez, I shouldn't open my mouth. Okay, uh just while I'm at it, too, there's a. Um number of events and announcements, uh so of course, Culture Days uh have already started and run till October sixteenth. Uh this week, uh the for the municipal election ballots will be mailed out this week sometime. It's the all candidates meeting in Arthur at seven PM tomorrow, Tuesday the twenty-seventh. And then the all candidates meeting on Thursday at the thirtieth in Mount Forest at the sports complex. And as councillor Burke alluded to, the BIA parquet from twelve thirty to, or sorry, from twelve to one thirty. And the next Rec Parks and Leisure Committee is October the fourth. And then the two advance poll uh for the election of October the eighth in Mount Forest. And uh the fifteenth in Arthur, from ten to three on both those days. And the Mount Forest Chamber of Commerce AGMs coming up on the thirteenth of October as well. And the Arthur Chamber on the October the nineteenth. And then, of course, Election Day is the twenty-fourth of October. I will leave some some updates for the next meeting. Okay, we'll move on to uh bylaws, we have a couple of bylaws here. And so ones to appoint our new CIO as deputy clerk. And of course, uh appointed an integrity commissioner. So a recommendation here that bylaw number one oh six dash twenty-two and one oh seven dash twenty-two be read a first, second and third time and enacted. Did I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Steve, seconded by Sherry. Uh any discussion on those? And I just have a question, Karen, with regard to the integrity commissioner, this is because the current one is no longer continuing?
No, uh the appointment ends at the end of uh December of this year. And this integrity company is just a little closer, they're more locally based. Our current one is out of Ottawa, so but we've never had a need for.
Okay. Best to be prepared, like the Boy Scouts say. Okay, any other questions or comments on those bylaws? All those in favor? That's carried, thank you, move on to our confirming bylaw. And the recommendation is that bylaw number one oh nine dash twenty-two, being a bylaw that confirmed the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Wellington North. At its regular meeting held on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Be read a first, second and third time and enacted, could I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Lisa, seconded by Sherry, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you, we'll move on to adjournment. And the recommendation that the regular council meeting of September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two be adjourned at seven thirty-nine PM. Can I twist anybody's arm to move and second this? Move by Steve. Come on, somebody seconded it, Lisa. All those in favor? That's carried, thank you, thanks, everybody, for your your time with our meetings today. Have a good evening.